Alright, we will go ahead and get started. This is the City of Trinidad City Council meeting for June 10th, 2025. We're just returning from closed session and there is nothing to report. Let's start with the flag cell, please.
We already did it.
We did it before we got here.
Oh.
Yeah, we've convened the meeting already.
Okay.
It was a PD's idea.
Never mind, you don't have to do the flag. Alright, with that then, let's look at approving tonight's agenda. Are there any questions about the agenda from the council?
Did I miss? There was no, there were no minutes in the packet, were there?
Yes.
There were two.
All of they were late.
Yeah. Uh, one of them was, well, we'll get to that. The items from the public, any questions or comments about tonight's agenda? Okay, uh, is there a motion? I don't know, I still want to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce had his hand up first for a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, tonight's agenda is approved. Now, speaking of the minutes, there were some minutes from, excuse me, wait, my voice, May 13th, were available, I think, as of yesterday, and May 20th was this afternoon. Have, has the council had a chance to review?
Okay.
And I see some head chicken, I only had a chance to review one of Bryce, you did not, right? So I think, I think that staff, we will hold approval of the minutes until the council has had a chance to review. We'll do that in our next meeting in July.
Can they be recent for the, with the July packets?
That we, uh, yes, yes, would that be more?
I mean, I, if, if, uh, three of us have read it, I'd be willing to vote to approve upon that.
I've only read one, so I.
Okay.
I just briefly looked at it.
Okay, yeah, sorry, the other one came through and I haven't had a chance. Alright, so let's do it July, that's included in the July packet, we'll take public comments at that time. So with that, I'm gonna move on to the council reports and committee assignments, and I'll start at that end with you, Bryce.
Well, let's see, the last HCOG meeting was pretty uneventful. Think of anything that pertained to Trinidad business. What would affect Trinidad, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing to report.
I also don't really have anything to report, the redact meeting, um, was out over Memorial Day, so have another one.
Hey, Humboldt County, we, um, we have a free ride.
Want to go on the deck, does she?
Till August 31st, really utilize our bus service in Humboldt County, it's a good time to try out the bus, maybe go to Farmer's Market on Saturdays, or go down to, who knows where, but, uh, the bus is a great place to try and, and explore Humboldt County. We actually just got a new hydrogen bus that, uh, we had grand, grand unveiling last month. So you'll see hydrogen buses coming through the city of Trinidad very soon, it's one of, and that we have, um, got through grants, um, through the federal government, um, and we're installing a hydrogen fueling station right now in New Ripton, which is the first hydrogen fueling station in Humboldt County, which buses and the public can now finally charge up and plug in their car. So that's exciting. Um, and, uh, Redford's Energy Authority, pretty excited that they finally got their 300 megawatt, um, Sandrini solar, uh, facility up and running last quarter. Uh, now, um, it's part of filling their, their needs for clean renewable energy for up here, even though the, the energy is being produced, you know, outside the, the county, it, uh, it offsets a lot of our, um, demand up here as well, so. Saying that that is finally on, uh, tied into our grid after we've gone.
Thank you. Very good energy. Friends, Alafco, I attended on May 21st. Um, the topics were the Elan Fire District annexation was approved. It was really kind of just approving something they were already providing fire services for. Uh, there was also Southern Humboldt County Park asked for water to be provisioned for, uh, water fountains and things like that, which was approved, and it's a good thing, obviously, but it worked down there. Uh, the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District extension to the Rancheria was discussed again briefly with staff commenting. The, uh, LaFos staff commenting that they are going to be kind of extra vigilant and making sure that they follow process, so that, um, there's plenty of time for public to give input as they consider, uh, moving the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, uh, water provision to the Rancheria, Trinidad Rancheria. So that came up again, and then, um, I, there were two Humboldt Bay, uh, Humboldt West Management Authority meetings, uh, one in early May and one on May 28th, and it was a budget discussion, so fiscal year budget was up. And that's all I have. Uh, let me see, are there any council questions or comments about what you just received? Any questions or comments from the public about the committee reports? Okay, same then, then we're going to go ahead and move on to the, uh, actually, the public safety report is in the packet, but Lieutenant McCall will not be joining us this evening, so please reference that, if you have any questions or comments, let us know. And with that, we will go ahead and move to items from the floor, and at this time, members of the public may, uh, comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Okay, last chance, any items from the floor while I keep back for sure. Okay, with that then, we are gonna go ahead and move on to, uh, the, tonight's consent agenda, which includes financial statements and the law enforcement report. Are there any, uh, is there any desire to pull up either of the consent items tonight from the council? Alright, any, uh, public desire to pull an ire from this? Right back to the council for a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent passes unanimously, and that brings us to our regular, regularly scheduled program tonight, which begins with, uh, discussion decision regarding resolution 2025 dash four, adopting the 2025, 2026 budget. And if I, that I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council, tonight, it is our extreme pleasure to present the budget. Uh, as we discussed last month, uh, we made the improvements that the council requested. Uh, there weren't many, we are presenting tonight a, uh, budget that is balanced. Uh, we have revenue projection of $967,723, and we have an operating expense budget of $957,710. So about a $10,000 difference in that, uh, which is good for us, and, uh, I'm not gonna take up much of time, we had a pretty extensive, uh, report last month, I will say that we have, uh, come back with some updated cemetery plot rates, and updated fee schedule, as we promised in last month's meeting. Um, and we will continue to monitor the cash flow and support analysis of our sales tax revenue going forward. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council regarding the budget?
No, I looked over the figures again, and it seems similar to what we studied last month, so. Support, uh, proving the budget.
I just wanna say how appreciative I was, uh, your narrative and the, the way you made it comprehensible.
Thank you, I think, uh, staff and I collaborated very well, since it's my first budget, I think we're very proud of what we presented to you all.
Alright, so I, uh, yeah, I asked all my questions last time, it was a very thorough presentation, I thought staff did a great job, thank you for, work you put into it, so I don't have any other questions, and it appears that you satisfied the council as in last meeting, so I will go to members of the public to see if there are any questions or comments regarding the budget. Yes. One, oh guys.
Say, good evening, my name's Anita Thompson, and I'm a Trinidad water customer. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you in advance for taking the time to listen to my public comment. I want to address the city's 2026 water fund budget goal. Analyze and adjust adopted rates, close quote. I rea- I realize that rate increase was long overdue. However, I request and hope, and I'm sure other water customers hope, that our water rates will not continue to increase after this year. Especially now that Coleman Engineering is no longer a consultant for the city, and the city staff have met the state's water board requirements to operate a water plant. As a city council and the city manager, where you all inherited Coleman Engineering. This is, you know, so. And we already know a lot of the circumstances kept them on. At the February 8th, 2022 city council meeting, the council approved the contract with Coleman Engineering, you know, to operate the water plant for the city. At this meeting, water customers were strongly opposed to this contract, and were shocked due to Coleman's, uh, consult fee of $35,000 per month plus a 3% increase beginning January 1st, 2023, and supplies were not included in this contract. Sorry, I'm doing like a history lesson here on Coleman, but just gonna do it. At this February 2022 meeting, the city council promised water customers that their water rate increases would not reflect Coleman's engineering combined fees. Water customers were also informed during this meeting that Coleman's contract would be a short-term contract. After two years, Coleman Engineering still running our water plant, the former city manager stated that monthly costs would be reduced to approximately $5,000 per month, however, this never happened. Instead, Coleman Engineering continued, they continued to charge the city outrageous amounts every single month. There was never a cap or limit based on how much Coleman would charge the city. By and higher hand Coleman Engineering, it is my understanding that the city had approximately $1 million surplus in its water fund reserves. Not sure of that, but that's what I think I heard. At the December 14th, 2021 city council meeting, the city's voter Ralph Morales stated, well, Trinidad has done well this past year despite the impact of COVID. So at that time, everything was really good before Coleman came into the picture. In addition to Coleman Engineering, the city also paid specific watershed association, associates, excuse me, PWA to, for example, measure Lufenholz Creek's water levels. At PWA's recommendation, the city water funds were spent trying to locate land so that ponds could be created as an alternative water source for the Lufenholz Creek. But the city's attempts to accomplish this goal proved unsuccessful. As, as our city managers dated during this budget presentation last month, both the consultant related to the budget into the whole, close quote. And how unfortunate, how unfortunate and true this is. In the past, uh, Mayor Kelly and the Water Advisory Committee, which she chaired, have tried their best to find a solution to replace Coleman Engineering. I attend, uh, council member Kenny and council member Tull, but also on this committee, and it was an impressive committee. I mean, they dug really deep, really tried to, to figure out how to get Coleman out of the picture. I attended these water advisory committee meetings, and I was always impressed and grateful for this committee. I was also rooting for Trinidad staff, hoping they would pass the state water board T3 and T2 exams. We all wanted the same thing, not to rely on our consultants, and instead have our dedicated and talented staff on our water plant. The current, this is about staffing, the current water plant and Lufenholz Creek's water level monitoring staff includes two consultants. One consultant is PWA, and the other is a T3 CPO consultant, who recently replaced Coleman Engineering, and thanks to our, to our, uh, city manager, this new person that the CPO consultant is charging a lot less than Coleman. And big thanks for that. The city of Trinidad's in-house staff includes one T3 trained under Coleman Engineering, and city funds were spent for his training, for his training, two T2s and one T2 in training. Since Coleman's contract in February of 2022, the city has had two in-house T3 employees who have been trained in Coleman. First T3 did not work out, however, we currently have a T3 employee. So it seems to me that we do not need to have two consultants if we already, but this is, this is me looking from the outside. It seems like we don't need to have two consultants if we already have an in-house T3, two T2s and one T2 in training. Prior to Coleman Engineering, we only had one T3, and he did an outstanding job. Uh, so again, requesting not to increase water rates in the future, uh, based on the promise of the other council in February 2022, and, um, also looking at, uh, us having to pay for Coleman Engineering's long-term contract, which is, I know no one wanted that, but that's what happened, or overlapping costs of staffing. I do understand how difficult and expensive it is to operate our small water plant. Maybe there is a possibility of the state's water board assisting the city of Trinidad financially. And then my last suggestion, suggestion is not to delay the $100,000 general fund loan to the city's water fund. Lastly, I'm unsure what PWA's, PWA's current and fu- future fees are, and what they do exactly. And those, wondering, uh, city manager, if you could just address PWA's fees and the services they provide in regards to the 2025 and the 2026 budget. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thanks for letting go for a half hour.
Thanks, dear mom. We want to, uh, we can, we can address those, I think we're gonna have a water discussion next month, so we could go deeper on it then, or if you want to handle it.
You have me to answer it down.
Okay, okay.
Uh, so thank you very much for your questions, I appreciate it. Um, uh, let me start with the last thing first, so the T3 and T2 staffing. Uh, we do have a T3, unfortunately, is not interested in being a CPO, so, uh, it requires the person who holds the T3 to actually wanna be responsible for that work. In addition, it requires the person to be a D2, so it's not just a T3 credential, we also have a distribution system we're responsible for, so it requires a T3 and a D2. Uh, so unfortunately, that person who holds the T3 isn't interested in performing that work, so, uh, we are happy to say today, I was gonna wait till staff report, but I can tell you now that Carl Anderson has passed his T3 well, last Friday, he's gonna take his D2 here within the next few weeks, I think, uh. So hope, hope is on the way, uh, that's the good news, uh, that's in the, in the long term, that's a good, the short term is, we still have requirement to have a CPO. We do have, uh, Eric Sanders, who's acting CPO now, for the $4,000, uh, that was, uh, mentioned earlier in the questions, uh, that's gonna continue. Uh, once we get the T3 and D2 credential, we'll still need, uh, Mr. Sanders for some regulatory help, because our staff is still learning the regulatory environment, so we will reduce that agreement to match the work requirement, um, but staff, he's needed to help us with the plan to get the plan up to speed, it's been long overdue maintenance, and Mr. Sanders would then help us, uh, find some solutions that we didn't otherwise have available towards for Mr. Sanders to ride, so. I would say by this time next year, hopefully, we're fully in-house staff, um, that would be my goal. I, I will say, if we go back to the rate questions, council did approve a five-year rate plan that rates due to increase, I believe on July 1st, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so that's gonna be $72 a month, uh, coming up pretty quick. Um, I will also say that even though we raised the rates, it still is not, uh, entirely covering our capital reserve fund, uh, needs. So it's fun, funding operations and maintenance, it's not funding a capital reserve fund, so. We're gonna have to see how that, uh, plays out over the next year or so, the rates, uh, structure and the rates are still relatively new, so we're seeing how that affects the, uh, fund balances. We are reluctant to ask for an additional $100,000 loan this year, um, it would just be an added increase in cost of the rate pairs at some point. That, that loan would have to be paid back, so we're reluctant to try to engage in that loan if we don't see a need for it right now. We're hoping we can get grants, uh, such as the Mezzi grant, to help us on some of our capital needs, uh, and, and maybe cover that delta between what we need and what the rate funds are supplying right now. So in the short term, we're just gonna try to observe what the rate fund, the rate stabilization is doing. Uh, in the longer term, we're gonna continue to look for grants and continue to try to grow and, uh, and retain in-house staff. So I think, I think that answered most of the questions there, and we will be back, uh, July 9th, uh, of the discussion about all things water.
Great, thank you. Other questions, comments regarding the budget? Right, then I'll bring it back to the council if there are a question.
I'll move that we approve resolution 2025 dash zero four.
Okay, all second, is, and then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that, um, you've accepted and adopted the 2025 2026 budget, uh, by unanimous vote. Our next item is the discussion decision to appoint two council members to represent the city in government-to-government meetings. And I will turn it over to staff to kind of, uh, give us the context.
Alright, we're back again. Uh, so traditionally, council appoints members to our, uh, government, uh, meetings, uh, we have by the list that we maintain. You all, uh, attend those meetings, usually it's a council member and a, and a alternate. Um, this is a similar setup. Uh, we did not appoint, uh, members to government-to-government, and, and, and we haven't, I think, for some time, or, correct, chickens, I guess. Uh, because traditionally, what has happened is, we would get a request for a meeting, and then we would, uh, get the council to appoint two members, but what's been happening in the most recent past is, we've had requests at government-to-government meetings, and those calendar availabilities for the folks that are requesting the meetings haven't necessarily lined up with our council meetings and able, uh, ability to appoint, uh, members. So we're asking council to appoint two, uh, government-to-government committee members so that we can attend those meetings, uh, on a regular basis and more be, more nimble and able to be, uh, the, uh, government-to-government requests that we're getting from both tribal governments and other government, uh, organizations. Happy to answer questions or comments if you have that.
Questions for Jeff?
Well, I think the only real question is whether we're gonna make it an ad hoc committee or standing, so, that's what we have to drill down on, in my opinion.
Yeah, so, so Bryce, uh, yeah, I chatted a bit about the Brown Act, and, and the concept of a standing committee versus an ad hoc debate. What we've been doing is appointing two folks to attend G2Gs on an ad hoc basis, as requested by a tribal government, either the Rancheria or the Zara Kai. And, um, what we were hoping to do was avoid that process, when we keep, you know, nominating ad hoc, and instead, you know, determine tonight two people who would just be, uh, going to the meetings, insist on it, you know, for a year or something. So we didn't have to keep discussing it, but I do think, um, just from the reading we've done and the discussions we've had, perhaps we do need to look at, just maybe with the city, if we wanna do it ad hoc, then we just need to occasionally have a special meeting potentially, um, to, to vote for those two people, is that, is that your understanding?
Right, right, uh, apparently, the problem in the past has been the amount of time it takes to coordinate, um, support, and it's, so if we were willing as a council, when the request came in, to, uh, notice a special meeting, uh, single, most likely a single island, to appoint an ad hoc committee that could quickly meet with whatever tribe it was that wanted to consult with us. And, uh, and hopefully, that would make it, uh, much more workable to actually address whatever concerns wanted to be discussed, so I, I think, I kind of think we should, we should stick with the ad hoc, because that, that gives, um, the tribes more confidentiality as far as, uh, those kind of meetings don't have to be public, uh, participation under the Brown Act and so forth. So.
Are you saying if it's ad hoc, it, it does, the Brown Act does, does not?
Yeah, they can be informal meetings, and then the, the two council members would report at the next regular meeting what was discussed in general terms, but they're not public meetings, they don't have to be.
Because it's ad hoc.
Yeah, because it's just an ad hoc committee for whatever one issue is being discussed. But I would say also, we, we should probably request that, you know, if tribes wanna meet with us under that type of arrangement, if we, if they could let us know in advance, well, what exactly do you wanna discuss? You know, at least in some kind of general terms, so we could determine that, whether that's actually appropriate to do an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, because there can be such things as closed sessions in a G2G if we're covering things like litigation or real estate transactions, um, to, very similar to the way we operate as a council, right? So knowing those topics, to your point, Bryce, could, you know, is a factor.
Yeah, I'm not sure in, in advisory committee meeting, I don't think there's the option for closed sessions.
Okay.
We'd have to check the.
We need to check the press.
Sure on that, uh, don't think, I, I don't think there are. But, but we can, you know, the fact that it's not held in public, the, the meeting makes it more confidential.
Right, so if we do ad hoc, that makes sense. So would you, what do you think, counselors, though, about, you know, the potential, it could be potential to need to have a special meeting every once in a while, just, um, to, to be responsive to one of the tribal governments? That would be the downside about.
Right, a little more work for us.
A little more work for us.
How about? That would mean.
As opposed to a, a, a standing appointed people?
Yeah, as opposed to a standing committee that continues on for a long period of time.
Has to meet periodically regardless.
For example, the, the animal advisory committee is a standing committee. That's why the agenda has to be posted in advance and open to the public and so.
One concern I have about this is, if, if it's ad hoc, which counselor would be, uh, most useful in that position, uh, has more knowledge of the tribes? That would just be up to us to choose that one.
Yeah.
On an ad hoc basis.
Yeah, on an as-needed basis, we could point whoever, whichever two of us are willing and able to do it.
And the same, same quality.
Yeah, theoretically, we're all equally qualified to do it, okay?
There's, you know.
Yeah, okay.
We vote, we would still vote on.
So just as a, an interesting kind of aside, under our written, uh, our consultation policy, both ad hoc and standing committees have to be done publicly under the rule we made for ourselves, but that is only when the law requires us to consult with tribes. There are times when the tribe just wants to consult with us, and that's a little different scenario, that's why I think we can have a standard Brown Act, ad hoc.
Yeah, and those, those cases would be for CEQA and the general plan, correct, it's looking for required consult. And those would be public.
Yeah.
And so I wanna, yeah, that's a good distinction to make. What, what we're trying to do is make sure to be on the, the government-to-government, the spirit of the government-to-government consultation, which is generally, you know, it's a meeting, and you're discussing, uh, sensitive topics, you're discussing important topics, and there's a level of trust, and, and then you come back and report in public. If we make it a standing committee, it would be up to the public, I'm not sure that, um, either of the tribal governments would, would actually agree to that. Up for that, right? For that, right, I never, I haven't had that discussion, but that would serve their purposes, yeah. I would, yeah, Jack's been a number of the meetings as well, so.
So, yeah, I would just recommend just do it at a lot. Keep it healthy as we have been doing it in the past.
Yeah, I mean, we have been pretty much doing it at a lot. Uh, Joe, if you want to.
If if the council chooses to do that, we need to have two members appointed tonight.
Yes.
Have a request.
Yes, they have a request.
Sure.
And and just a point of clarification, if we wanted to do a G to G with a, let's say the Yurok. Uh, so we have a request right now from the Rancho Rio. Um, if the Yurok, we wanted to be proactive and say, we would also like to sit down with the Yurok tribe, tribal government. We could, can we do an ad hoc? I guess I'm looking at you, Joe, can we do an ad hoc tonight to say that these two people would meet with both?
We, we could try, we would try to facilitate that.
Because there are some, some items that we've discussed in closed session that I think might be relevant to both the tribal governments. Okay, all right, so I, I'm hearing from you all that ad hoc is probably okay. Let me take a pause before we vote for the two. Let's go ahead and I, I'm not sure about protocol here. Shall I go to the public comments or?
Please, please, fair.
Let's go to the public comments, I'll just say.
Maybe we should um.
Concept of ad hoc versus standing and then.
And also, uh, you know, the staff, staff is recommending that you and I, Cheryl, do do the one this time around.
Right.
And, you know, I'm, I'm willing to do that. I don't know if you are. But the public might have comments on that aspect of the two. So we can get that far and then open it up.
Okay, so if we're comfortable then, the proposal on the table, just so the public is clear. And I, I'm doing this because in our last two council meetings in May, um, I'm, I'm kind of recapping things a little bit better because I noticed that there was some confusion and I was reached. I, I remember the public reached out to me confused about something. And so I just want to make sure that we all know what we're doing, but I would make sure. As well, so it may slow us down a little bit, but I'm just going to recap. So what the council is saying is we'd like to appoint two members for G to G on an ad hoc basis. The proposal on the floor made by staff is for Bryce and I. Before we go to public comments though, I would like to ask if the council, you know, we're all equals here. So, you know, in the past, other counselors have been interested in attending and be part of a G to G. So if any of you want to, you know, put your name in the hat.
Could we not do that, say, if the next uh, G to G?
You can do it next time because we're doing this ad hoc. So right now it's for uh, an imminent. Um, I think we even have a date for the Rancho Rio possibly of June thirtieth.
Correct, that's correct.
And then we do not have a date of the Yurok.
We'll try to fit that in, in that same time.
Under that scenario, yeah, I'm not available that.
Okay.
That part of June, so I probably should withdraw my name then.
Okay.
Time around.
All right, are there, are.
I have a fairly open schedule, so you're always welcome to contact me. Swat you in like a, you know, a person. I think that would be a better role for me at this point in time, but I can look at my schedule.
Yeah, so we actually each see people all the way stand. This case, it's a, a two-person versus a primary and alternate. And and I shouldn't, we shouldn't mention the date sooner, so I hadn't thought of that, so.
Do you know what time?
There is, I think, we have, I don't think we have.
We don't have a time.
Well, you don't know that. Sign by any chance you?
The agenda without a set at this point.
So we could ask for like an afternoon time or something.
Typically, the city Trinidad points this in the afternoon, yes. Probably right after lunch, about one thirty or so.
Yeah.
I'm free at two thirty.
You're what?
I'm free at thirty thirty.
Just have like that.
Yeah, like I have one thirty, two thirty.
Uh, well, let's do this, let's propose that it's myself and Katie. We'll go back to the Rancho Rio and ask if two thirty works. If it doesn't work, um, Terry may be able to be an alternate.
Great.
Okay, all right. All right, are there any public comments about these please?
Yeah, just one very simple question. With government to government apply exclusively to meetings with tribal entities or are other types of government involved as well?
If, if there are other types of government involved for sure, like if Humboldt Bay Water would be one agency that might be a government to government meeting, there are other. Uh, in my time with the county, we often had meetings public works as a public work person. We had meetings with the city of Woodland and and other cities in the county. So it's quite, that's a quite normal convention for a government to government meeting. Or on the counties rather than cities, but it applies to cities as well.
All right, now I'm going to go ahead and make a motion on this, uh, that uh, myself and uh, Councilor Breckenridge with um, Councilor Verella as alternate um, will be uh, on the ad hoc G to G uh, in the ad hoc G to G meetings for uh, both Rancho Rio on uh, June thirtieth as well as the Yurok tribe uh, T B D. That's a motion. Okay, and all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you. And thanks for everyone hanging in while we work through our kind of our process here. All right, the next item on our agenda is the discussion, uh, decision to appoint and replace council member Breckenridge on the animal advisory. And I guess I'll start with uh, you, Joe, the city manager, and then we'll have us as council of Breckenridge if she has on city big short staff.
All right, Eric, members of the council, thank you so much. Uh, animal advisory committee is a standing committee formed by the council on April sixth, twenty twenty four. The committee consists of five members, a Trinidad resident, one member of Trinidad Rancho Rio, greater Trinidad area, and two council members. Uh, council member, uh, Breckenridge is the current chair and is asked to step down. Um, and so we will need one member from the council to act as chair and be on that committee.
Right.
They need on a semi regular basis, uh, those, it's not on regular top of the schedule, it's as needed.
And Katie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just that I am not sure how much more work the committee has in front of it. But it had become, it's too time consuming for me given my circumstances. So I'm sorry to leave before the end, but.
We took it quite a ways because I just said, I noticed there were six meetings in the last year, which is more than this, you know, committee set that. So thank you for that. Um, I did get some feedback uh, from a couple of members from the animal advisory committee that they do feel that, you know, they, they could benefit from a couple more meetings at least. And so we agreed that maybe we would continue at least for a few more meetings and then revisit um, how, you know, that you should. Right, um, would anyone like to, uh, I think before I go to public comments, let's talk about who would be willing to chair the meeting. I am willing to put my hat in the ring and chair that meeting if um, if no one else wants to.
It's all yours.
I just might as well just throw it out. So Jack and I will um, you know, continue to fight the good fight. Uh, if you, if you all agree, but let's go to public comments and see if anybody has any uh, reaction to to that, any, maybe don't do it, Joe. Okay, any public comments of the animal advisory committee? Right, well, then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
Uh, I still move that you, the, the new chair of the animal advisory, what we finally called the doggy committee.
Okay, all those in favor wolf, no, I'm just kidding. All those in favor say aye. All right, thank you. Uh, the next discussion is uh, discussion decision to sunset the trails advisory committee. So I will turn this over to Joe once again, our city manager to.
All things, all things, I may be preparing to proceed there.
Yeah.
So thank you for your time, Mayor Kelly, a member of the council. Tonight, we have a recommendation to sunset the trails committee and return that uh, discussion and business back to the council. This committee was established as a subcommittee of the Trinidad City Council on March twenty second, twenty seventeen. Uh, the primary function for the resolution was to advise the city council staff and planning commission on management and policy protecting trails. Uh, the committee met regularly in the initial years. However, as time has passed, the work of the committee has become more contentious and more difficult to attain positive results. This is because mostly because the early work was less controversial and the committee was mostly in agreement with what needed to be accomplished. The work required, now requires more planning committee and city council work to be put tasks as approving a C D P trail work or discussion of how to proceed on the A M P, A L M T Axol Memorial Trail is almost, is a task more suited to the city council. Given the evolution of this work and decisions that can be made for the trails in the city of Trinidad, this work is best accomplished by the city council and planning commission direction, uh, with the record of the planning commission. So we recommend, staff recommends the city council to sunset the trails by committee. And then there is a need for this uh, committee in the future, we could always send this back up uh, to the council if you should do so. Have you answered questions or comments if you have them?
Any comments from the council?
Well, I'd like to thank all the members of the Trails Committee for all their hard work over the many years since twenty seventeen. But no committee is, is uh, intended to last forever. And I think the lion's share of the work has been done and this council is uh, demonstrated a little different direction as far as uh, wanting to get trails opened up again, starting with the uh, Act of Lincoln Memorial Trail. So I'm in support of, of sunsetting the Trails Committee, talk for it or need it.
I feel like uh, planning mission of the city council and the tribe management team have all, you know, all working on different aspects of trails now, and so it became somewhat redundant. And also, um, I think the Trails Committee sometimes lacked the authority to make some of the decisions that they wanted to make. I was on the Trail Committee for a few years and, and um, I really think maybe it's time to just bring it all back to the planning commission and city. So I'm in favor of sunsetting it as well, so. Any other thoughts from the council on this? Hey, Ben, I look forward to go to public comments. This is regarding the sunsetting of the Trails Committee. Will you come to the, Ms. Thompson?
As a member of the Trails Committee and of course, prior to joining the Trails Committee, there were ongoing discussions and exciting proposed plans to have trail signage that not only gave a hiker and our visitors information on trail directions, but also made it the difficulties of our trails and total trail distances. In addition, the Trail Committee discussed the connection of all the city's trails with signage and create, and creating a, a city trail map as both a harcock and one posted on the city's website. Other, other discussions included removing old unnecessary signage. Uh, an example of having old signage that gives the appearance of cold clutter and be found on Trinidad. The city's benches, benches were also targeted for either repairs or replacement. Yeah, former council member, uh, Jack West, it has a really good booklet on all the, on all the benches and said city hall that needs to be, that you can be looked at. I understand that the Trail Committee rarely meets and there are really good reasons to, to dissolve this committee. I, I completely agree that should be dissolved. Um, my only concern is that the previous proposed plans and outstanding ideas that were made by this Trail Committee and former Trail Committees and, you know, as uh, Councilman Kenny says, there's been a lot of work done and great discussions that these plans be implemented sometime. Um, if the Trails Committee is suspended, I request that the city council places on either the summer or fall agenda or winter agenda that um, the Trails Committee's proposed plans and discuss, and discusses a timeline to complete several trail projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, oh, yes, regarding the trail committee? I'll bring it back to the council and I think it's a, a, a great, um, it's a great idea to look at some of the actions that we had in the past. I think Jack West had done a lot of work on the bench programs and then there was some signage inventory done and so forth. And so we could maybe look at taking action on some of those down the road.
Right, and I spoke with him uh, just recently about this and he said he's willing to continue in some capacity to work with the, with the council and the city manager to, you know, make some more things happen relative to what they were working on. So it's not like we're going to be abandoning.
Yeah.
Activity, improving the trails or anything, just kind of reorganizing the structure of how we.
Sounds good. There, does anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we uh, you'll sunset the Trails Committee at this time.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, so pass us you now, basel, to sunset the Trails Advisory Committee. And then uh, the next discussion item is regarding improvements to the racket court through the per capita grants. And this is a continued discussion from previous council meetings. There were also some uh, sound tests or decimal tests that our city manager will discuss. And then tonight, we will actually vote on this, so. I'm going to turn it over to you again, thanks to five, Joe.
Angela Patter is the person who has the information that we are looking for to see in first hour report. Oh, I'm having to support.
City Council Hall. Um, so staff is coming back to the council uh, to request direction on how to handle the improvements to the that's going to be funded for, for. I'd be worried about meeting staff presented to council with next, next step options for the long desire that creates to the tennis court. And again, we proceed this time through the Department of Parks and Rec. Um, and then as discussed at that meeting, the tennis court is eligible for funding um, as this is a project that is going to increase the use of racial activities. Um, and the addition of pickleball, um, will fulfill that requirement. And the current status, uh, there were mixed opinions on the addition of pickleball, so council voted to protest. Um, and then what was conducted in April have found that the school yard is actually louder than the polo players. Um, and it was just measuring around seven examples and that's just above normal conversation levels. Um, and again, the hours operation won't change to the court. Um, and so at this point, the project is ready to go out to bid, so I'm just requesting direction on.
Yeah, I really love this idea of fixing our tennis court. People love a tennis court and it's falling apart. Um, I'm getting a lot of feedback from people that that don't want pickleball. Um, could we maybe get a bad minute line, which is very, you know, you know, very silent? Could we kind of do something different?
I would have to ask that they be able to, um, because ultimately the ones that are looking to start this. So that is something that I can go to the grant manager and give a little bit more information on to council.
Yes, yeah, I mean, we could come up with a, like, handful of ideas that would increase usage of that. I was thinking like outdoor, outdoor movie nights where we could every Friday have a screen on the side. Or, you know, anything that increases user, usership should help us give a grant, so.
Basketball, I know.
Yeah.
I would ask for a grant manager, but again.
Yeah, so.
To confirm about them, so I don't want to give you a guess answer.
For sure, yeah.
That's such a creative idea.
When's their, when's their deadline, like, for this?
Um, I don't think the exact date, but it's in twenty twenty eight. Um, this has been extended multiple years, uh, there's a lot of space for coming in first, I think. That's why we've gotten all these sessions. So I've got a little bit of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you, Jack, I was thinking basketball, but I like bad.
Basketball, Dorothy would not like basketball, that's a foul.
But, but the difference is it's the pop, 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 pop. That's what would drive you crazy, the, the, the rhythm. Uh, so the, the volume argument sort of to me becomes kind of empty because it's the, the rhythm that drives you nuts if you're trying to do anything.
Yeah, firstly, I haven't heard the goal, so I can't really speak to it.
Thank you.
To, to Jack's point, I, it seems to me very likely that uh, addition of. Addition of badminton to the court would qualify for the grant because definitely a racket sport. You need a different kind of net, of course, but I don't think that would be a big problem.
Or volleyball as well.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know, that's that's not a racket sport, but. It's a net sport.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
So I think that's an interesting idea. I guess I I'm kind of too, you know, was concerned about the. You know, we heard from a lot of folks that live in the neighborhood that they were very concerned about the noise, and I I was pretty excited about pickleball. I've never played myself, but I thought it would be fun to have that option, but. I think I think I could drive over to Gian Toli and use those courts if I really wanted to to learn the sport and. And I'm personally, even though this is a mixed cheese area, I'm leaning towards. Not adding pickleball because of the concerns for the residential neighborhoods, but. I want to get, you know, all the questions and comments and hear from the members of the public, and I love the idea of maybe being able to do something that's a little quieter, but still. You know, still enhances the sport, we can still resurface that. My thoughts to where you have to say so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great suggestion, Jack. I hope that works. I know it seems like a good fit, but I mean, just reading all of the public comments seems very clear that. City of Trinidad residents don't want pickleball, but I think that there's still. That question of, you know, maybe repurposing Sanders Park and the playground. I would like us to try to see what we could do to. Work through some of that red tape. Do you put a pickleball court there or just some more recreation activities? Great, especially for our youngest residents of Trinidad.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I I agree. I think Saunders would be something to investigate down the road as well. As, you know, put the children to play area, but also adding some, you know, some other sport, just recreation opportunities, but. Unless there are other questions or comments from the council, I'll go to public comments, okay? Is there any public comments or feedback that beyond the comments that we've received online?
And it is, little run Hector, the only comment I had was another sport that I consider is handball, essentially American handball. It's the game where you slap with the ball instance or. That might also work. I'm going to get the close on that as.
Okay, yeah, that's another one we should look at. I think what the council so far is saying then is maybe we try for something different, but yeah.
We want the money to fix the tennis court.
But we don't want on happy rest.
Yeah, but we don't want to have a bigger lawsuit on our hands with neighbors.
I mean, I guess, you know, I would be interested in the council, like even if we couldn't get the grant money, though, I do think we need to find the money somehow to resurface the tennis court. Because I think that part, there's a big crap in it, so. Anyway, so I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion then to keep this moving.
Do we know how much would be cost to resurface it or?
We thought what?
I think the cost of around sixty five thousand and we're shaking our head yes.
That much? Hey, I'll do it for forty time.
And then maybe in the next week, we could all come up ideas to get Angela that she can ask the grant writer or grant provider.
Yeah, so we definitely need to put our thinking caps on it since like then, because I didn't process that so long.
We will waste some ideas and we will reach out to the. Grants and issuers and find out what the parameters are.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion then. The motion is that we do not move forward with pickleball at this time. But we do explore other options that are creative for use of the tennis court, but that maybe are less noisy. And is there a second? Eighty seconds, all those in favor?
Is there further discussion? Further discussion, yeah, I'm going to dissent on this one.
Okay.
With apologies to my neighbors, who are most of the people who are against it. When we had a little demonstration, what was it, three weeks ago or? You know, I listened to it from my house, which is also pretty close to tennis court. In fact, I should.
Down there, yeah.
And I really didn't think it was, you know, that big of a problem. With one court. It was some limitations on the time, you know, so it wouldn't be too early in the morning or too late in the evening. I was prepared to. To approve the pickleball, so I'm probably, I'm going to vote no on the motion, but I just wanted to explain my reasoning.
Makes total sense, yeah. Okay, so we have four eyes and we have one day. And and I guess in the spirit of further discussion, I had not heard from. Very many people in town that wanted pickleball, so. You know, as well, so like the comments that we got, we didn't get a lot of feedback from folks in town saying they wanted.
Well, there were, there was another round of written comments earlier.
Yeah.
Couple months ago.
Were they?
There were, there were, yeah, they were, yeah, there were a number of supporters.
Most of the people I talked to that wanted it outside of the city local spot. That matters because everybody gets to use it. Anyway, we have our our determination, so. Let's move on, and and item number six is a discussion decision to adopt Resolution twenty twenty five dash oh five. To update the Trinidad Cemetery burial plot rates.
All right, Mayor, I'll back up. Thank you very much for your time, Mayor Kelly, and members of the council. Tonight, we have. The cemetery burial plot rates subject. It's been on the city's to do list for many years. The last rate adoption was back in two thousand on July twelve, so almost twenty five years to go to the day. I think it's long past overdue. We are. Based on calls and comments from staff, we are not only the cheapest in the county, but maybe the cheapest, least expensive in the state. We have many calls from out of the area. Because of our rate, so. The rate increased, I think a few things that we need to kind of put into this conversation and into the front of your minds as this conversation continues. We have limited space. And and wanting to have states available for locals is a primary concern for us in this rate adoption. There are people who have existing family members in the cemetery and and of course a deep ancestral connection who. Would rightly want to be buried next to their loved ones or in a place that's special to them because they were born and raised here or lived here for most of their lives. This will not prevent all locals from desiring a plot in the cemetery, but it will certainly give us some price increase that will make us competitive. With other more. Other cemeteries in the area. We'll be covering expensive for operating and upkeep of the cemetery grounds. We will be establishing that. But savings for future plot. Sale revenue for when you need to either buy more property. And or improve the site in some ways. It's going to help us provide our long term strategic decisions with additional revenue. We'll give you an example, the fund balance was in twenty twenty four, a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars, and as of April one, fund balance was a hundred and thirty nine thousand, so a slight loss of about seven thousand dollars. That contributes this loss primarily to the fact that we haven't been keeping up with the price increases. Maybe increase authority comes under Trinidad Municipal Code. We gave you an example of cemetery plot rates in the county. Trinidad, as you can see, is low by quite a bit in most of these comparisons. We did offer council an opportunity to have resident versus non resident pricing. We think that's an attractive option, that's for the council if you died. We are vested with the power to manage and control our own cemeteries, and this does include setting fees. Which gives you the option to have non residents and residents pay different rates. We have the option one and option two. Option one, that will be a single grade of thirty six hundred dollar burial, same for everyone. Option two would offer a residential burial at a fifteen percent discount as allowed by the Trinidad Municipal Code. That's about three thousand dollars. And non residential grade, grade will stay at the same thirty six hundred dollar rate. We have had. Been advised by the city attorney. That we can have the residential versus non residential rate, and staff suggests that this rate would probably be. Most advisable to us, however, as the council decided to make, and we're happy to answer questions if you have them.
Who else do we have left?
I think I had that question. And I wasn't prepared to answer that.
It just seems like.
Say, you know, it it the cremation area, there's a specific spot up in the upper left corner that's cremation plots, and if you were to. Count those, I'd say maybe a few. But then if you go around the cemetery, you start looking at three foot by eight foot grave plots. Maybe a few hundred, but there's so many unmarked graves that if you look at the space just raw and you. And you look at a map and you look where the grave markers are, you could say, well, I think there's this much, but in reality. There's a lot of surprises. It's not really, it's not just simple math.
It's a new tagline for a cemetery.
There are a lot of, I think it was said several times.
I think we're. You know, we used to sell about five to seven plots a year on average in the last five years, six years, you know, we could sell anywhere between fifteen. More.
My time here, it seems like the word was out for a while and mortuaries were telling us that a pretty high clip. Just because we were so low priced, so they were making that delta between what they charged their per person. It was having a funeral and and what we charged, they would make money on that delta.
Could we use that extra increase to buy more land?
That would be one of the things that we would provide with that fund balance for sure.
A percentage today of non resident persons resident requesting, would you say you're getting? Like a ballpark?
There've been very few. City residents, but when I, when we're discussing, we use the term resident, that would be nine five five seven oh, you know, maybe.
Greater Trinidad.
Greater Trinidad area. Lately, not so many, you know, and I would say probably twenty percent, and and then they pop up, they may have left the area for a long time and come back. They have those ties to the area. But not, let's say fifty, maybe twenty percent of the sales come from people that maybe nine oh, and the rest of them come from. By the area.
They liked it here and they know.
There's a lot of visitors, a lot of people who say, I asked that question because I'm. A little hesitant to just hand out cemetery plots, because I get a lot of calls from people to just say, we we used to visit. You know, every year for like, you know, a decade, and then we stopped coming, and now we're in, you know, Southern California, and we just. You know, my mother wants to be buried.
Okay.
We're running out.
Okay.
A question about cremation, Trinidad doesn't do cremation. You're talking about the where the ashes can be placed.
Yeah, we have a. Will bury in her. The cremated cremated remains, but we, yeah.
But you don't do.
We don't provide those services.
That's fine.
You don't, yeah.
Yeah.
Things get tight, if things get tight, it might happen.
I'd say. For the tennis court. I thought raising the rates made a lot of sense. I I wasn't sure. I mean, I kind of looked online and tried to get, you know, kind of a general idea. It looked like they go generally between one and four thousand, unless you're in New York City or something where they're very expensive, so. We would be a little bit on the high side, but on the other hand, this is a very kind of. I know it was, you know, very pristine, yeah, very.
Idyllic.
Idyllic, thank you.
Idyllic, so.
Is there any reason to say to not open it to anybody who's not a resident or has had some residential history here, or me? Is that being too?
That might go a little too far as far as.
Yeah.
No, I think the pricing model. Do that, it's a public sensor.
Oh.
I think that pricing model was hoping to kind of discourage that, wouldn't completely.
Without eliminating.
Credit.
There is such thing, you know, the difference, there's there's cemetery districts, which is like, which are special districts. And those districts have board, and those boards and those laws for cemetery history. Can be. Whatever the board in the district is not bonus, whereas the difference between a cemetery district, which most of the cemeteries in Campbell County are. Exception is Trinidad is a public.
Municipal.
Municipal center. And that's where. Determining who gets to, you know, has access to the cemetery.
Is there some reason not to raise it even more for non residents? I guess I am in favor of discrimination there, but. Why not raise it more?
Okay, so that's a good question, and and the way I understood it, the memo from the city attorney last year that we received. Basically said. Says here, the board of trustees, the board of trustees, well, in this case, she's using the argument, the city has the same rights as the, as the district in this particular case. Shall set the fees at that amount at least. That at least equals the amount of fees charged to the residents or taxpayers and shall include non resident fee of at least fifteen percent.
At least.
At least, so it can be more, so the the option two that I've. Proposed. Only as a fifteen percent differential, so that can be.
Not.
If that's something that you choose, we can modify those rates.
It seems to me that, you know, we provide so much and we really have so little revenue. That this is a place. Instead of, you know, it being four thousand and eight thousand, you want to be buried here that badly, why not?
It's option three. It's a, it's a more dramatic differential.
Yeah, maybe like six thousand for non and fifty percent off for residents for three.
A deal.
But just to be clear, this is in general fund, like this is cemetery.
Right.
So it would be used for cemetery fund purposes.
And I don't know what the, I don't know what the price like elasticity is here, right, so that, so like if we raise the rates too much, you know, do our sales decrease so much that we lose revenue? Like, I don't know if there's a, but we have, you know. Limited supply, so. Yeah. So I, yeah, I like the idea of charging, having more of a differential too, I think. If we're allowed to do that, then making it more like.
Right.
Five thousand for non residents and twenty five hundred for residents or something like that.
And the residents being the nine five five seven oh zip code.
I think so, don't you?
Yeah.
Council agreed.
Well. What about somebody who lived, have lived here?
I would like to see, like, like they lived here for three out of the last fifty years or something, you mean, some stipulation in there.
Think it gets hard, though, when we start to set criteria for, I guess, for what a resident is, like, well, it's. Yeah, like if somebody lived here five years, or maybe they visited off and on for ten years or.
They should definitely concur at residence at the time of purchase.
Yeah.
We'll give you an example, so.
I'm just thinking Gay would have a hard time trying to have.
We need that discussion.
Yeah.
I mentioned to Joe, I want to over, you know, complicate the conversation, but this is something I mentioned to Joe, I said, this thing could really get wild, this conversation. Because because of that, now, you know, there needs to be a certain amount of discretion offered at this, to the to the clerk's office to be able to make those decisions. One of the things that occurred recently, just for example, as a member of the tri ancestral, you know, family. Married a relative of theirs here, who was from this area for many years, but no longer lives in Trinidad, so that would be a case where. We would have to use our discretion and say, you are part of a Trinidad family, so, you know.
Yeah, think of the power.
Yeah, I know, it's kind of, it's kind of awkward, it's humbling too, but at the same time, that that would be something that we would have to have the discretion to do, that that would be. It's it's not going to be written.
I think, I think we went back to the Sotus argument, I know it when you see it.
Yeah.
Different subject.
Yeah.
So it's argument. It was Anton Skalina.
Yeah, so how the differential have been.
It was infinity, right.
So that's the that's the discretionary line we refuse if we. Gave or the clerk or whoever's here would know. When they heard that story, we would have to allow that. A little breath for the person.
Yeah.
Sitting in our park.
I think until we buy that second plot of plot of land, I think we should just try to keep the, you know, folks that are in Southern California. At bay and and charge six thousand and then the locals get the fifty percent off. And and then the locals, you'll have to be the gatekeeper on that.
So you're saying three and six. Does counsel kind of agree with that as a uh possible option?
And six is not that much if you're from another place, I mean.
Really?
Yeah, if you're in LA, six thousand is, you're you just sold, you lost your house, they have a lot of little bit more capital.
I I would go at least eight, even ten.
It's nothing up there.
The fees will be adopted by resolution, so it's not by ordinance, you can make the decision tonight, obviously, that's what you choose. And it can be revised later if they're become a problem, so it's not.
If we find out that it drives up.
Can revise.
It'll take two months to revise, it's just a simple resolution that comes on another discussion and you all can revise them again.
Yeah.
I just don't want our revenue to go down too much, but maybe I'm worrying too much about, you know, you think the demand will still be there, okay.
It's it's not a revenue.
Yeah, because we're doing fifteen hundred for for everyone, right?
Yeah.
And.
It's too small. It's not general fund revenue, so it has to all be used for cemetery.
Yeah, what we also do, just so you're aware, uh if if someone, we've been trying, I've been, I feel like I've been a pretty good steward of the space up there. We're really trying to encourage, there's a multiple burial option, so if you have a single three foot by eight foot grave. Or cremation to which you cast it, so a lot of times, knowing that the space is limited. I recommend that. Most people are pretty okay with that thing. But um we charge one and a half times the cost of the grave, so add, you know, one and a half times, whatever the highest rate is, say six thousand. Now it's going to be nine thousand.
Uh I see.
You know what I mean, so there is a multiplier.
Or forty five hundred.
I'm sorry, yeah. If it's a low.
But if you're not that attached to Trinidad or lived here, then can go be buried somewhere else.
Yeah, because part of the discussion is a deterrent, you know, versus right now, which is the rates are a trap.
Yeah, yeah. All right, let's um, let's go get some public input on this and any thoughts on uh burial plot rates? And then we'll bring it back to the council to kind of summarize.
Andrew, yes, yeah, I'll go around after, um, just a couple of thoughts that you guys were discussing, um. Seems to me that uh probably I ought to put on the list of urgent repeat, but to create inventory, so you actually know what you have left up there. Uh only because um it does sound like the revenue stream, one way or other, is going to dry up, whether the rates are so punitive that it slows down or you just. Flap another space before we can buy something else. Part of that, because then that does, I would think, become a general fund problem. Which is a thought that I agree. Um the other thing I would say is, um. I would maybe suggest keeping the local rate maybe even lower than three thousand. Uh I I actually don't have a dog in this race, um but, but it just seems to me if the point is to keep it. It's acceptable.
Thank you. Other thoughts on uh burial plot rates? Okay, then I'll bring you back to the council. Is there a proposal that anyone would like to make?
Well. I think we ought to go a little bit slow as far as, uh if we do that, there might also.
Without like twenty five hundred for local and. Seven thousand for non resident.
About seventy five hundred.
Seventy five hundred, good ones, you know.
It's tough.
Seventy five, seventy five hundred non resident and twenty five hundred resident. We're kind of just throwing out. How does that?
Yes, for.
What about?
Use it as a test period for six months and see if revenue goes up or down or whatever.
Yeah, we might want to like have a timeline of how long we want to adopt these rates if we haven't adopted them for twenty five years.
Bring him back once a year, this rate, discussion and the next one, just all about, I I don't plan on waiting twenty five years, if I'm.
And would we do then for cremation though?
If we did what?
What would be the rate we'd suggest for cremation? It's very different.
Was the cremation rate?
Seventeen eighty. It's one option.
So just, just for, just looking at the current rates, thirteen hundred thirty five for a single grave, uh three foot by eight and then cremation is six seventy five, so it's a little bit. Just the big show there.
And cremation for non residents is?
Don't have that yet. Is that one rate, no non resident or resident?
Staff suggested a fifteen hundred dollar rate for residents, uh seventeen hundred dollar rate for non uh for cremation.
Yeah, so maybe if we're saying twenty five hundred and seventy five hundred, then we could do fifteen hundred for cremation. That's resident. This is a conversation I really never.
Let's take it.
Would we make the cremation?
Yeah.
Keep it.
Because cremation, you can add more um plots, right?
Well, only if you buy a big plot and then you can put four cremations.
It's real estate, it's been bought.
Yeah.
Half price, you get a big, big enough just for cremation.
I like the fact of just keeping it in line with what other um, you know, uh cities in the area have been, I mean, I'm just a little concerned about. This just total capitalist, you know, structure around people's death and dying, I think that there's a little problematic. Aspect of that, like, we shouldn't be trying to. You know, but at the same time, I think we should have a bigger barrier to um non residents, so. I agree that like, you know, having a a. Like what Andrew would say, you know, a more accessible option for residents and then. Um, you know, making it more of a luxury burial, if somebody chooses to do that here and.
I'd also like to add a discount for folks that don't want embalming. Because of the water quality issues that we're seeing with a lot of cemeteries, there's a lot of leaching of formaldehyde and other. Not so good chemicals that go into our groundwater and into our oceans, so while we're talking about death. There's also green burial, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be cool.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit last time, I'm really glad you brought that up, because I had, I I thought if we expanded, that's something we should really talk about. Um or maybe we can do it now, I don't know what the laws are, but we could have a green burial option, I think that'd be. Fantastic.
I know the land trust was discussing that for Shong Bridge Pass for.
Oh, okay.
Discussion that they're having, this is council.
Okay.
You know, like making it a stipulation, maybe not just a discounted rate, but a stipulation.
Yeah.
Be buried here.
Yeah, formaldehyde free embalming, yeah.
We need to, we should look into that.
That's going right to Mill Creek, you know.
Right, right, yeah, I agree. I I just know that there've been some, there's been some work in the county, there was a person who was going to create a cemetery and they were going to do green burial, but there were all these like. Regulations and things, so we should just make sure that what we're allowed to do, not allowed to do, but if we're allowed to do it.
I think we need a little more time.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So how do we feel about the rates, um seventy five hundred, twenty five hundred, fifteen hundred? And then a potential discount, look at that, down the road for green burial.
Or or a stipulation.
Yeah, or a a stipulation.
Um I'd like to add like, um, if someone couldn't afford it, they could write a letter to the council and we could kind of. Look at a situation and say, you know, just kind of what Carrie is saying, like, not everyone can afford seventy five hundred, but if there's something that maybe is.
Extenuating circumstances. But how does?
Yeah, I I I'm generally in favor of that breakdown. Seventy five, twenty five, fifteen hundred, is that what you said? Yeah.
Yeah, seventy five, twenty five.
Sadly, inflation is a fact of modern life.
Yeah.
Yes, the genie's out of the bottle.
Yeah, well, then real estate is real estate.
Yeah, well, you don't actually own.
No, but nobody else can either.
That's true.
Maybe, let's try it and see, and then I guess we could, um, let's flip that as a possible, but I guess I would ask a quick question. The city clerk, I guess, um, to Jack's point and Carrie's, if somebody did have a hardship or Joe. If somebody did have a hardship, but they wanted to be buried here and there was, you know, as we discussed, discretion where you, you kind of want to. Like somebody, let's say somebody said, well, I I lived there for thirty years, you know, and I just, you know, I had to go to retirement home and Fortuna for the last three or something. And I can't afford the seventy five hundred, I think it would be Gabe's discretion at that point to say, well, we're going to count you as a resident. And then they would get that, right, so I think that's how we would maybe handle it, is that sound fair?
We would need a rate for the non local cremation as well, mayor, in this motion, please, so if we have, we have a motion for.
Okay, so the motion is seventy five hundred for non resident, twenty five hundred for resident and fifteen hundred for cremation. Uh we would explore discount for green or a stipulation for green burial.
Is there, is there non local cremation?
And a non local cremation.
Yeah.
I think that should be like three thousand, right?
Well, if we kept the ratio between. Fifteen hundreds and the twenty five hundred, apply that to the.
Yeah, so let's say two thousand.
I'm not good with math, so.
Non resident cremation.
They're they're saying fifteen hundred and three thousand, yeah.
Well, that would be double, so I think we did, uh we did three times, right, the residents to non resident.
That's what we have right now, we have seventy five hundred non resident, twenty five hundred resident. We have fifteen hundred for resident cremation, but we could make that one thousand resident cremation and fifteen hundred non resident.
Well, if we were going to fix it with uh the pricing, then it would be more like a forty five hundred dollar. Non resident cremation.
Yep.
Do we want to add some type of discount or maybe free for the local indigenous people?
Do we want to codify it or just leave it uh to the clerk's discretion?
The council decided.
I think leaving it to the clerk's discretion and that maybe where there is an opportunity for like. Fifty percent discount. Where, I don't know if you need that permission.
Yes. Um, thing is, if you codify it, then it's like you're inviting. Uh as opposed to somebody coming forward, say an indigenous person saying, is this where I really want to be buried and I can't afford it, then. I mean, you would have the option to take it to the city manager or bring it to the council even.
Yes, I I I don't think that, I think the um, the native communities are are set up to accommodate financially for. Grants, you know, when it happens, when death occurs, like they, they they have funding sources. That we've experienced, if they need help, financial assistance, um through their tribes, so I don't. I mean, this is, that is definitely, that offering something for free is definitely going to be a. Wanting discretion of the city for for that, it would have to be in the policy, however, I, like I say, I don't think that, um, you know, it's. It's hardship, let's say, and I think the rates that they're at right now, with the prices that you've put for local, twenty five hundred and fifteen hundred, I think they're. Very reasonable, in fact, I think I wrote, uh, I did a three percent increase from twenty twenty or from two thousand. Annually, just honestly, a three percent increase every year and I came up with twenty three thirty six. So if you were to look at it from that perspective, the twenty five hundred is.
And the average.
It was reasonable.
The average in the area was like twenty four fifty or something.
That's right, we did about twenty four fifty if you look at all the cemeteries around, I mean, Campbell County that we quoted it, so. Um, that would be a policy decision, so.
I think it'd be hard to administer, um. Running program, given the space limitations, that'd be my two cents, but I, um, but I am in favor of of. It's just, you know, city discretion to. You know, apply a hefty discount where it's appropriate. Either for a hardship or, yeah.
Getting pretty used to.
I mean.
Drilling down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I kind of trust your. So like, yeah. You really dig in and get to the details. All right, so there, uh I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we can. Uh seventy five hundred non resident grave, twenty five hundred, excuse me. Seventy five hundred non resident grave, forty five hundred, I think we said for non resident cremation. Resident local or local, I should say, twenty five hundred grave and fifteen hundred cremation. I believe this is where we're at, but, okay, is there a second or further discussion?
Also, I can tell.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, okay, so that passes unanimously and then we'll review annually and see.
Is there a resolution that goes with this?
There is.
Is there?
Does it have a number yet?
Resolution twenty twenty five oh five.
Okay, so then my motion would be to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash oh five, uh bringing the rates for purchase of burial plots. In the Trinidad ce- cemetery for the amounts that I just.
Just for clarity on the record.
And then, uh, there's a second, and we all voted aye, correct? Okay, uh we are moving on, uh to item number seven, a discussion decision regarding the first remnants of work. First reading of, first reading ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh two, limiting se- limiting section fifteen of number two sixty. Of the Trinidad mu- municipal code, um. And any other ordinance or resolutions or parts and ordinances or resolutions that are in conflict with the schedule of fees. For building inspection services, so this will be about building inspection fees for me, and back to staff.
Thank you very much, mayor, for doing some good work tonight, I'm really excited about this, this is another one of those items that have been. Uh not quite as long, uh since we uh updated it, but uh twenty twelve is still thirteen years ago. Uh it is, that role of general practice with municipal, I update the mastermind steps on an annual basis. Just to keep a a a rest of the cost increases and anything better added, but for the planning and building department, I think it's important to note. For us that our planning and building department are uh contract positions here. So the fees that we charge or that they charge for string their services are directly uh attributed and and uh. Credit deducted to the uh, to the account, uh. Yeah. So the tax fee proposal is modest, around thirty five percent, uh considering it's been posted twenty years. Since the last fee update or fifteen years, uh it also, uh the the proposed fees also include a cost recovery to be collected when a project must. Were for evaluation and or input from other agencies such as uh Department of Environmental Health of the county. Uh or Public Works of the county, which happens on a fairly regular basis for us. We recommend accepting this report and updating the schedules as the ordinance is submitted, uh we consulted with uh. With our attorney, uh because we're trying to get this uh by resolution after this, is that correct? Right now it's by ordinance, so this will come back to you in July for a second reading and then thirty days after that it will come into effect. But uh we are asking you to review and update the fees as uh provided in our report. Uh we have given you both permanent fees, uh grading fees and uh the fees uh. Definitely are time uh update, so both uh post uh approval and current uh fees are included in this step. Happy to answer any questions or comments you may have.
What was the uh, is it a thirty percent increase?
Thirty five percent. I want to thank building inspector for the help on putting this together.
Uh, yeah, once again, I mean, everything keeps going up, we gotta. Just keep, keep pace. Plus, it's okay to be the last guy to raise a rate, so.
So I got curious about, you know, kind of like, were there some national averages and things and, you know, just like, is there a baseline and? The National Association of. And the National Association of Home Builders, um, I, I looked at the twenty-twenty-four numbers and they, their permanent fees averaged one point eight percent of total construction cost. Um, and it had doubled. It was nine point nine percent, just under one percent. It was point nine percent in nineteen ninety-eight. So there had been a double basically in the last twenty-five years. And I can't remember you, I know you, I think you guys said it was, it's been twenty years since we, up to, yeah.
Fifteen, fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen, okay. So, I mean, you could maybe even go a little higher, but this seems very reasonable to me.
We, we compared it to Arcata, Blue Lake and other places that have just recently adopted and increased their fees. So we were trying to not be above them and not be too much below them.
Yeah, it seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, I'm generally supportive of this.
Uh, let me go to a public comment. I don't see at the moment any more questions from council, but I'll come back to council. Any questions from the public regarding, uh, building and permit fees? Building permitted plan review. Um, I don't see anything from the public. So any other comments or questions from the council? All right, well, I would move to approve, um, this is some.
Some, this, this is twenty, twenty-two-five that, there.
So I would move to approve ordinance, uh.
First reading.
First, excuse me, yes. So it's approved, the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash oh two, amending section fifteen oh four to sixty of the municipal code, et cetera, et cetera.
One question. This is the first reading, is there a second reading?
Yes.
There will be a second reading? It'll come before the council?
Yep, next month.
Is there a second to approve this? Okay, Kay, you seconded, uh, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, so the building permit fees and temporary fees are approved and we are on, uh, last item for tonight, the staff activity report. We're all turning over to Joe once again.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a great night so far. I appreciate all the help that the staff has given us and the council and the folks out there, uh, helping us, uh, and to request and get better at what we do. So tonight, uh, staff report, uh, Eric Sanders invoice for May was four thousand. Uh, that's going to be every month, uh, that's locked in, it's contract. Uh, Saget Brown passed his T-two exam, which, which is pretty exciting. Uh, Carl Anderson, uh, passed his T-three exam on June sixth. He will be trying for his D-two, uh, over the next few weeks. Uh, he's trying to get a, trying to get on so testing schedule now. Uh, after that happens, he will then be qualified to be the CTO. So it takes a couple months for those credentials to get up and and then we will try to believe in, uh, from Eric Sanders to Carl Anderson. Uh, and by this time, make sure hopefully we have an in-house, uh, homegrown staff running the plant and the water system. That's my goal for the staff and our water plant. Let's say Minter Ty project. We received the, uh, staff, council approved the plan specs and engineering that went out to bid, uh, this, I think, Monday. And we've been getting questions. Uh, we do have these four interested bidders. So that's good. Um, the, the challenge with this bid going out around this time of year is it's not as competitive as it would have been if we could have got this out earlier, but this, it, it, it is what it is right now. So we're hoping that we get some competitive, competitive bids. We will be back, uh, hopefully at the July nineteenth to recommend and work for this project and get this project entered construction. The windows, rock, and perjury parish here at Town Hall, the estimate came in a bit higher than the sixty thousand dollar estimate from, uh, um, early twenty-twenty-four when we discussed this and council approved the reserve fund. Expenditure for most likely going to come back with this on July ninth, uh, when we decide which contractor we're going to use and what those prices are, but it's coming in around sixty-six thousand dollars and change. And that did include the rock repairs that we need, contingency probably around ten thousand dollar, ten, ten percent for property repair. Uh, so it'll probably be around seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, the porch also came in a little bit higher at around eleven K. We will have some samples of the porch material, but we'll bring that back for council approval as well. Uh, the good news is the paint, uh, for Town Hall exterior is coming a good bit cheaper than I estimated. So, um, there will be some savings there. That's coming in around fifty-eight thousand dollars. So we'll have all three of those items for you all for your approval so we can move on and get that worked underway. And I'll come back on July eleventh. Uh, the, the ALNT, we've been working, uh, multiple times over the past week, we're slowly moving down the path, trying to get RCA under contract. Uh, we're working on resolving the appeal process. Uh, letters should be going out tomorrow. He's shaking his head. Uh, and we're hoping to move forward. Um, we're working with coastal commission and other stakeholders to get this trail open.
Was there a projected starting date?
Uh, I'm working with the contract language right now. Our contract, uh, liability language is a little restrictive. It was, our contract calls for a five-year liability coverage for, uh, inju- injuries and accidents, and that's not really something that they can promise RCA, especially on this trail. So we're amending the contract language and they will sign it, uh, and we'll get it under contract hopefully within the next week.
You know, are they free to start the work?
They are, yeah, yeah, yeah. They're free to start the work. It's just trying to work through the contract I'm in right now. So hopefully by the next week we'll get that done. Edward Street update, for those of you who are still listening about Edward Street, I did get a call this week from our engineer who has agreed to, uh, try and, uh, come up with a plan to have the signs removed. That's council's choice. So he's working, I worked with him for a few hours over this week, giving him some documents on the project, uh. Hopefully he'll, we'll have that back maybe as early as July, but most likely, uh, the whatever meeting comes after the July ninth meeting.
He's talking about the signs that.
The signs, yeah. So I'm guessing, if I'm guessing, to be fair, we're not going to have a meeting in August, probably September. Uh, we'll be back to council in September, which is what we kind of talked about earlier in the process. So that's kind of on the same timeline. Uh, he doesn't see a problem in removing the signs and bringing a plan for you all approved that would include that. So you will have that option for council to discuss.
Yeah, I'd ask you something.
Sure.
Is there, uh, some safety measure being put in place in, in place of the signs?
Still be the crosswalks.
The crosswalks will still be there and you all can ask questions with the engineer and, and ask for modifications, whether you want to leave the sign on the bottom, signs at the bottom or some other modification, that will be your choice, but we'll have an engineer to ask questions and, and make modifications.
And this satisfies our insurance and so forth.
This will, that's the idea.
Your, council has to approve the plans and specs for this project. So that would be.
Okay, so. Jump into kind of guess.
Happy to answer questions or comments beyond that if you have them.
Any questions for Joe? I guess one thing I would just say is just looking at the agenda tonight, um, you know, thank you, Joe and staff for tuning up all of these things that, you know, we hadn't paid attention to for a while. So I really appreciate that because um, obviously we've been remiss in raising rates and things and that can come back to, uh, haunt us later on. So thank you.
It's been a long time coming. We're very happy to kind of get this one behind us and move on to whatever comes next. We have a long list.
I have a question.
Okay, let me, uh, Jack, or I had.
Oh, hey.
And then I'm gonna go.
Um, Joe, um, to add to your staff report, um, your, your emails on Friday are, are wonderful. Just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah.
Like, wow, like, and I, I've been sharing it with my Underwood neighbors and they want it every week. So I think you could get a good following, people of, uh.
Please let me know how we can share that better with you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a very good idea.
Yeah, and yeah, it's like a whole weekly newsletter.
Yeah, send it to the Texas.
Okay, we, we'll work on that. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we'll go to public comments this time. Are you, you had a question?
Yeah, sorry for interrupting, but we want to just.
Yeah, we were, we were, uh.
Just maybe you didn't answer my question about PWA with the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That was, that's a thirty-five thousand dollar contract and they, they are part of our permit requirements to monitor water flows because we have a minimum water flow permit requirement. And when we, when, when we don't meet the minimum water flow requirement, then we're, we cannot draw water from the creek.
That was my second question, but wait, can you, so thirty-five thousand dollars per year?
For this year, yeah.
For this year, we have PWA thirty-five thousand.
There was some extras in there. Uh, there was some additional reporting. Uh, I'm thinking that study was, that study is twelve thousand dollars out of the year.
And then so what about next year?
Next year, we're going to negotiate.
And then, um, but they don't monitor the creek all year? They just start, we're gonna, that was my next.
Flow, 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 yeah.
When are they scheduled next?
They just start, they just started, uh, I just got the report today. There's some trees in the creek that are causing some flow anomalies. So we're going to have to remove the trees to get a better flow rate. Uh, a number, a, a more accurate number for flows. So, uh, they'll do it, I think, once a month.
Right, it was, I remember when we had the trails committee, uh, trails, okay, uh, water advisory, some company. It was like, when they went out, it was like six thousand dollars to measure.
The contract is twelve thousand for the year.
Then when they go out to measure it.
No, it's not additional costs. It's.
Oh, okay. It's all, okay. And then, so we haven't had rain. So does that mean they're gonna start measuring like?
They started that, they started measuring this week.
Oh, this week, okay. And then that will go in your report.
I can, I can put that, see, I see now in the report.
And then, um, also can you, what, what I used, I used, so you asked about please report Coleman monthly totals. Can you also, when you, in your report, uh, let us know our customers, PWA, what we're paying them or what they did.
I guess you need that too.
Thanks. Thank you.
You're back.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Trying to manage, better manage those costs too, just so you know. We're, we're concerned about those costs as well.
Yeah, that's a lot.
All, 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 all those fees add up. So we're, we're very conscious of that.
Thank you.
Other public comments regarding your staff report. Okay, then I will bring it back to council. If there's anything else for Joe. Uh, how about future agenda items?
I got one.
Okay.
So, um, talking to the principal a little bit and my wife is on the school board, a lot of ideas are blowing in my direction. So I just wanted to share with you, um, basically I would love to create an agenda item to discuss this a little bit further. I would like to change short, short-term rentals in our community uh, to basically to favor long-term rentals with families to fill our town. Um, our schools are underfunded due to, due to lack of children enrolled. This year we have fired teachers and canceled valuable programs because we're short about twenty to twenty-five kids. Um, we have twenty-eight SDRs in town, and if we converted a portion of them back to long-term rentals, um, we could bring more families to this town. So my proposal is to remove the lottery and to remove the waiting list. And when SDR sells, we have one less short-term rental town. It will give SDR owners the stability to keep doing what they're doing. But if they need to sell, we don't give that new opportunity to someone new. Uh, it would encourage these, um, it, it would encourage hotels to renovate and thrive instead of the dilapidated hotels we see all around town that are not functioning anymore. So, um, I think we should just maybe discuss with our lo- local school administrators and see how we can help thrive their school and our community.
Okay, so this is, um, so we won't get into a discussion because it's not agendaized, but we will, um, take that input and feedback and see if we can add it to a future agenda.
We have that and the trails, we're gonna, I'm coming back for, hopefully a nice discussion there.
Okay.
We had something about the water, uh, from Humboldt Bay and it was going to give.
Next in July.
In July.
Yeah, full blown.
Yeah, I think it's our only agenda item right now because we expect it to be a thorough discussion. The other, uh, future agenda items.
Yep.
Yes.
The rest of opening, I can, words, I should say reopening, uh, I'm getting really concerned about the intersection of the public or right of way, or whatever it is that goes across the bay, goes with a view over the bay and ends up in John Flings property. Uh, that's becoming impassable.
Oh, the Wagner Street Trail, okay. And, and the concern is the, the, the vegetation that's however growing the entrance
Yeah.
to the trail. That'll be. Discussion.
My observation there is it's, it's not so much at the entrance, but further down the trail where vegetation from houses has spread out into the, into the trail, basically.
That too, I think, yeah.
Pretty, pretty narrow. It definitely, yeah, definitely needs some.
I noticed, I noticed that last time I went there as well.
Yeah.
There's a problem. If they bring in, uh, big equipment, which I've seen pictures of, it erodes, it further destabilizes the slope.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't want to do that, but it might be, uh, shrug, yeah. Hand tools, maybe. Okay. Right, thank you. Other future topics? Okay, then I think that we're adjourned for this evening. Thank you.